I'd like to call to order the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals for Thursday, May 4, 2023. First order of business was would you please call the rule?
Bruce Forrester?
Here.
Mike Pratt, not present. Craig Burrow?
Here.
Glenn Hughes is present but not sitting for this hearing. Rex Meyer?
Present.
Ally Huss?
The next thing is the approval of the previous minutes from the last meeting.
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next thing is a motion to adjourn pursuant to the county board's approval of petition number... What was the petition number last week or last month? Petition numbers. The two petitions were David Hicks and the...
Douglas Hicks and Judy Harvin.
Okay. And so the county board passed both of those, so that we need a motion to adjourn the meeting based on that previous meeting. So can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next part of the business is petition number 23-P-1605. Petitioner is Maples Road Solar LLC, permanent parcel number 07-02-36-400-008 in Dixon Township. The petitioner is requesting a special use for the construction of the... of a solar energy system. At this point, I will now turn the hearing over to our facilitator, Tim Slaven, with whom we have independently contracted.
I think you have to point me first.
Chair, could you do that by motion, please?
We need a motion for that?
I move to turn our meeting over to our facilitator.
I second.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is now yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Lee County ZBA. It's good to see you all again. In case the record was not clear, I want to... I'm just going to clean it up a little bit. There are four sitting ZBA members tonight. A zoning board under the state statute for a county the size of Lee consists of five members. There are four out of the five members present, and a quorum under the statute is three of those five, so we safely have a quorum. Welcome and good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see all my Lee County friends once again. I hope everyone's healthy, remaining safe. My name is Tim Slaven, and I'm a retired circuit judge engaged as an independent contractor to what is called facilitate this hearing. I have no adjudicatory responsibilities. I am not for or against any particular position. I am a neutral. I am here, hopefully, to add some process, organization, efficiency, and flow to these proceedings. First of all, hoping you all understand, a portion of tonight's Zoning Board of Appeals session will be taken up by organizational matters as I give this presentation, and we set some ground rules and do probably some preliminary scheduling. This is indeed Maples Road Solar One LLC's petition, Lee County number 23-P-1605, for a special use permit to develop a proposed solar energy system. The acronym is now SES here in Lee County, more particularly Dixon Township. Initially, as opposed to some of the previous hearings over the last few years, there are no longer... Everybody can clap. ...any mandated COVID-related masking or social distancing requirements. However, that does not mean that any of us should not be sensitive to possible risks too and concerns of our neighbors, friends, and fellow attendees. I hope everyone feels medically comfortable, but if not, one can also participate in this proceeding from your home, business, or other remote location on the Zoom video conferencing platform, or while not being able to participate, one can watch and listen to us on YouTube. The Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password is 209840. And that meeting ID and password will remain the same throughout this hearing and the ensuing hearings that we'll be doing for the next six weeks. The Zoom platform allows an interested party to actually participate. It is interactive. One may not only see and hear what is taking place, but when the appropriate stage comes, one may ask a witness questions, call a witness oneself, contestify, or give a closing comment or a public statement. Further, in an attempt to be as transparent and inclusive as possible, we are also streaming this proceeding on YouTube. However, YouTube is not an interactive program. On it, one can only watch and hear what is being done and said during the hearing, but cannot participate in it. As to YouTube, go to your computer, cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search part, type "Lee County-I-L," short for Illinois, "Zoning Board of Appeals." There's no need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. This should bring up a list of Lee County ZBA Youtubes. Input and select the date you're looking for, which presumably is May 4, 2023, and voila! You should be seeing us here in the hearing room and hearing... Well, seeing and hearing us here in the hearing room. However, please be advised that this YouTube feed will have a short, real-time delay just because of technical stuff. In case you're not a techno geek, for assistance with any of these machinations, you may call Ms. Duffy's office technical hotline, 815-973-3449. Now, for a bit more substance. There are two groups of attendees as this Zoning Board of Appeals hearing moves forward. One bunch I refer to as necessaries. These are people who must, as a practical matter, attend this hearing in person. They consist of your hard-working, practically-volunteer Zoning Board of Appeals members, Ms. Duffy, your county's outstanding zoning officer, her fine alternative energy coordinator, Alice, and at any given time, a witness, and of course, himself, and hardly least, our hard-working and skilled court reporter, Kelly. The other folks I will group into what I refer to as interested parties. These are those of you folks who are with us either personally or remotely on Zoom or on YouTube because you simply want to observe your county government at work, or beyond that, you have a particular interest in these proceedings. The next process I will try to explain is the manner by which these interested parties may choose to participate. I emphasize, please, please, know that everyone will have an opportunity... that opportunity for their benefit, and I want to provide the opportunity to participate in a manner that's orderly and as efficient as possible. However, because of the necessary electronic filtering by YouTube and Zoom, my usual process becomes even more central, and I will try to flesh it out more further in my presentation. There are many possible reasons for an interested party's appearance this evening and during subsequent sessions, whether in person or digitally. You could be a member of the public who's joining us simply as a citizen or spectator who wants to watch your government at work, or you could be a member of the public who wants to be heard. This does not necessarily mean someone who is absolutely for or absolutely against the requested special use, but someone who wants to participate. If you are such a person, you will fall into any one or more of three subcategories. One, you want to give testimony. This means that you desire, under oath, to have you or a witness of your calling testify to facts relevant to the board's eventual decision, such as not the time to describe your feelings or announce your opinion, but to aver facts, and you are subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to testify will be given one opportunity to do so. Two, you could be here because you want to be able to cross-examine witnesses, but please, that is just to ask questions of a particular witness, not to argue with him or her. Everyone so wishing to cross-examine will be given one opportunity to cross-examine each and every witness. Thirdly, you could be here because you want to make a closing statement or a public comment. That's your opportunity to give a speech, to tell the board how you feel or give them your opinion based on the facts adduced previously during the whole hearing process. During this closing statement or speech stage, one cannot allege new facts. When you think about it, the reason for that is simple. The two most important parts of adducing the truth of matters at a hearing are then missing. First of all, one is not under oath when you give a public comment, nor is one subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to give a closing statement will be given one opportunity to do so. For those of you joining us on the Zoom platform this evening or in the future, that interactive software allows an interested party to indicate a desire when the time comes to ask questions of witnesses, to present one's own testimony... own witnesses, excuse me, to testify oneself or give a closing statement or public comment. So, when I indicate that the time has come to begin one of those interested party stages, I will ask for participation from the Zoomers. If one is videoconferencing, one simply clicks on the icon at the bottom center of the Zoom screen labeled "Participants," and from the options that should then appear, click "Raise Hand." We should then see your raised hand here on our end on the screen in the courtroom. If one is remotely teleconferencing, in other words, not using video but just one cellphone, while remaining connected and you want to ask a question, one hits the star or asterisk symbol and then the Arabic numeral nine on your phone. We should also then see any raised hands under that option as well. However, I won't be able to call folks on a first-raised, first-come basis, so calling on the raised hands will probably be random, referring to the name, email address, or the last four digits of a phone number that appear on our display. Written communications sent in advance of this hearing or any written material intended as something for the board to consider is subject to Board Rule Article 5, Section 12, that eight copies be provided. Any communications received that do not comply with this requirement may not be considered by the board. I will now review the chronological progress of the hearing. I know that the narration that follows is really boring and it's really tedious, but please, reciting it is for everyone, to help you feel comfortable and not worry that you will not have a fair and complete opportunity to participate, but at the same time, to alert you when the three distinct opportunity forms of participation will present. The applicant has the burden of initially going forward. Accordingly, its agent, or in this case, its attorney, Ms. Kennedy, may first make opening remarks. Then, the applicant presents evidence, one witness, or document at a time. I will place each of the petitioner's witnesses under oath or affirmation. After each applicant witness, petitioner's witness, the state's attorney, the zoning officers, members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And please, I again remind you, that is only for the time... only the time for questions directed to the witness testifying who is under oath. After the applicant's evidence, the zoning officer has the opportunity to present witnesses... I got to go back on that in a minute. ...present witnesses and documents. I will place any of her witnesses under oath or affirmation. We're going to go through a little different process tonight. After talking about it, we're going to try having Ms. Duffy testify first, so... After the direct examination of the zoning officer's witness, first the petitioner, then the state's attorney, members of the public, members of the ZBA, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And once again, please, this is not the... this is the time only for questions directed to the witness testifying under oath. After the applicant and zoning officer have presented their respective evidence, then interested parties may present evidence, one witness, including themselves, or document at a time. I will place each such interested party witness under oath or affirmation. After each interested party witness, the petitioner, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties have the opportunity to cross-examine that witness. Then, the petitioner may offer rebuttal witnesses or documents one at a time. I will place each such witness under oath or affirmation, and the same questioning process ensues. If the applicant does not present... does present any rebuttal witnesses, interested parties may present surrebuttal witnesses one at a time, and we will go round the horn again. But if the applicant does not present any rebuttal, that will be the end of the evidentiary portion of the hearing. Finally, the petitioner is given the initial opportunity for closing remarks, and then any interested parties will be given an opportunity for closing statements or public comments as well. All of this is simply a process designed to give all a chance to be heard in a thorough but orderly fashion. There are some minor subrules, after which I promise I will be finished boring you further. Unless the ZBA chooses to waive the same, each session has a time limit under the zoning board's rules of two and a half hours. However, we certainly don't want to cut off anybody right in the middle of something, so I'll certainly make a reasonable effort to let someone finish a particular stage when the time limit has been reached, or if there is very little time remaining at the end of a stage, I may simply continue the session rather than starting on another stage. The ZBA also has the discretion to waive its time limit and extend any evening session. I also have, for everyone's benefit, the discretion to call for short recesses throughout the process. Under the zoning board's rules, I have the duty to rule on the immiscibility of evidence. While strict judicial rules of evidence do not apply, I will exercise some equitable control of what is being presented with or without an objection. We do, and we will continue to have a court reporter here taking down what is said during the proceedings. I ask all to be mindful of her job. She cannot take down two people talking at once. She can't take down silence like nodding heads or gestures, and while I know how very skilled she is, there is a limit to how fast a person can talk, including me, and expect her to keep up. I do ask for sensibility and decorum, please. This is certainly a public forum, but please be respectful of all who consider it important enough to be here. I ask to refrain from displays of approval or disapproval, and as now with all public gatherings, I request that you either turn your cell phones off or at least put them on silent. Lastly, your Zoning Board of Appeals members, these fine, hard-working, and practically-volunteer gentlemen act as finders of fact, much akin to a jury in a courtroom. Their decisions during the last stage of the proceeding are called findings of fact, and their recommendations are based on sworn testimony, admitted evidence, and closing statements they receive during the hearing process. They are your friends. They are your neighbors. They are your fellow citizens of Lee County, so please, appreciate and respect their role as we move through the days and weeks ahead. I ask you not to put them in a compromised position by lobbying them or having extra hearing conversations or correspondence until the entire hearing, including their decisions have been completed. In fact, they have been instructed to avoid these appearances of impropriety by politely telling an interested party something like, quote, "I am sorry, but I am not allowed to discuss the matter until the ZBA's work of finding facts and making recommendations is completed." Thank you all for your kind understanding in all these regards, and we will begin. And like I said, I, the facilitator, is going to call Ms. Duffy first. Do you want to step up and raise your right hand, Ms. Duffy? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and anything but the truth?
Oh, the sun is bright.
Yeah, it is. It kind of feels good. I'll help you get started. State your name.
Dee Duffy.
And Ms. Duffy, what is your business or occupation?
I am the Lee County Zoning Administrator.
And in that capacity as zoning administrator, have you put together a... I'm going to call it a compendium of documents received by your office regarding Maples Solar One LLC's petition for a special use?
Yes, I have.
And would you kindly go through those documents indicating what you've marked as exhibits and just a brief description of what each one is?
Sure. My first exhibit would be, number one, copy of the filed stamped petition that I received from Maple Road Solar. My second exhibit is a copy of the community meeting notice sent by regular mail to the zoning board, zoning administrator, and the Dixon Township Board, and all persons who own real estate within 1,000 feet of the proposed solar boundaries. Exhibit 2A is a copy of the handout presented at the community meeting on March 14, 2023. Exhibit number three is a copy of notice sent by certified mail to property owners adjacent to the boundaries of the proposed development. Exhibit 3A is copies of returned certified mail receipts of the property owners adjacent to the boundaries of the proposed development. Exhibit four is a copy of the notice's newspaper publication. Exhibit 4A is a copy of the newspaper's certificate of publication and paid invoice. Exhibit five is copies of the notice sent to District 3 County Board members, Lee County Health Department, the Lee County Engineer and Highway Supervisor, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District, the Dixon Township Supervisor, and the Dixon Township Highway Exhibit number six is a copy of the notice that was posted onsite of the proposed project on April 18. The zoning hearing agenda noticing petition displayed on the bulletin board on the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse on April 27, and posted the zoning hearing agenda on April 27 on the Agenda Center on the county website. Exhibit seven is a copy of the petitioner's supplemental materials with site plan maps. Exhibit eight is a copy of the Soil and Water Conservation District's report for the ground upon which the proposed development would lay. Exhibit nine is a copy of the email from Lee County GIS Department informing the proposed project does not fall within the mile and a half of the municipality of Dixon. And exhibit 9A is a copy of the email from the Lee County Health Department stating no objection to the proposed project.
All right. Any other testimony?
No.
Ms. Kennedy, questions of Ms. Duffy?
Just one, Your Honor. Ms. Duffy, you referred to the mailings that went out for the community meeting notice. I believe you marked that as exhibit two. Is that right?
Yes.
And you mentioned that those were sent by regular mail.
Correct.
But those were in fact sent by certified mail. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Nothing for that correction.
Okay. ZBA, Mr. Forrester? Mr. Forrester?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, thank you.
I have no questions.
Mr. Pearl?
No questions.
Mr. Maher?
No questions.
Mr. Hough?
No.
Interested parties indicate by raise of the hand if you have a question of Ms. Duffy. Yes, sir. If you step up to that podium, it's easier on us.
Yes, sir. My name is Douglas M. Gardner.
Thank you.
1848 Maples Road. Ms. Duffy, I didn't get any certified letters at all.
You're telling her things. Now, that's not a question. Now's your time to ask her questions.
Well, I want to know why I didn't get my registered letters.
Then just ask the question.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I don't know. I don't know that answer.
Okay. Guess that's all. Any other questions? All right. Ms. Hinkle, I forgot to... I'm sorry. I didn't see Stephanie here. Do you have any questions of Ms. Duffy?
No.
Ms. Hinkle, do you have any questions of the boss? Now's the time! Okay. You may step down. Thank you. All right. Ms. Kennedy, now I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to call Mr. Tom Ryan.
If you want to give an opening statement, now's the time. I know I sort of interrupted that, but...
I can just make a brief one. For those who are newer participating virtually, my name's Courtney Kennedy. I serve as local counsel for the applicant, in this case, Maples Road Solar One LLC. As Judge Slaven previously noted, Maples Road has petitioned the county to construct, maintain, and operate a 5-megawatt AC community solar farm in Dixon Township here in Lee County. This project is not a utility-scale project, but is a community solar project. And with me tonight is Tom Ryan, the developer of this project, from whom you'll hear the majority of the testimony on behalf of the applicant. He will walk you through what this project looks like, the benefits that this project will bring to the area. He will further explain what a community solar project is and how it can help those situated in close proximity to this project. Most importantly, however, Mr. Ryan will go through each of the ordinance requirements for solar energy systems and how this project as proposed meets and complies with those requirements. Among other things, you'll hear him talk about the technical aspects of the project, the project components, and why this site in particular was selected. At the conclusion of this hearing, and after careful consideration of all the evidence and testimony presented, it is my hope that you will agree with me that the project as performed... or as proposed, excuse me, conforms with the ordinance requirements and all of the general requirements for the issuance of a special use permit. Therefore, at the conclusion of this hearing, the applicant respectfully requests that you, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, recommend this project to the county board. Thank you.
Thank you. And you may call your first witness.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Tom Ryan.
Mr. Ryan, you want to step up, raise your right hand for me, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and anything but the truth? Let's see, where everybody can see you. These microphones are better than our last ones, but they still need to... you need to be a little up close and personal with them.
Okay.
May I proceed?
You may.
Thank you. Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name's Tom Ryan.
And tell us a little bit about your educational background.
I have a bachelor's degree from Boston University in Political Science.
And do you hold any other degrees or licenses?
I do not.
And how are you presently employed?
I presently work for Maples Road Solar One underneath New Leaf Energy LLC Incorporated, I'm sorry.
And what is New Leaf Energy, Inc.?
We're a renewable energy development company.
And was that company formerly known as Borrego?
Yes, formerly known as Borrego, which was around for over 40 years. About a year ago, we broke off as a development team and went under the name New Leaf Energy Incorporated.
And where is New Leaf headquartered?
We are headquartered in Lowell, Massachusetts, with offices in New York, Chicago, and California.
And what business is New Leaf primarily engaged in?
We're primarily engaged in renewable energy development.
You mentioned that you're here on behalf of the petitioner, Maples Road Solar One LLC. What is that company?
It is an entity that we made... we created for this project.
And is it incorporated in Illinois?
It is.
What is its relationship with New Leaf Energy, Inc.?
It is a community solar project that we have underneath New Leaf.
And is Maple's Road Solar One LLC acting for and on behalf of itself?
It is.
And is Maple's Road Solar One bringing this project before the zoning board of appeals tonight?
Yes.
And you understand that throughout the course of this hearing process, I'll refer to Maple's Road Solar One LLC as the applicant or petitioner?
Yes.
Do you have any experience developing solar projects?
I do.
What about utility scale?
I have never worked with utilities, just community solar.
And can you tell us the difference between a utility-scale project and a community solar project?
Sure. Community scales, community solar is a smaller scale, about five megawatts of energy, usually 35 to 40 acres, as opposed to utility, which can be in the hundreds of acres and much larger quantity of megawatts produced.
And what experience, if any, do you have developing community-sized projects?
I've worked for New Leaf slash Borrego for over two years now.
In your opinion, and based on your experience in this industry, what are the benefits of a community solar project?
A community solar project, as in the name, is meant to benefit the community for those who are interested in partaking in renewable energy but don't have the option of putting any solar panel or any other kind of renewable energy products onto their property, which this gives them, once the community solar site is set up, they have the ability to partake and reduce the amount of their electricity bills. Overall, it also decreases the emissions caused by fossil fuels and gives the utility grid a nice little stability.
And is there a subscription process for those to join in or reap those energy savings?
Yeah. Once a community solar site is developed, we'll have a third party that goes and asks locals if they would like to partake in it and to reduce their electricity bill.
And I assume that there's some sort of written notification that goes out to those individuals?
That's correct.
And is there a preference given to those located in close proximity to where the project is sited first?
Yes, definitely.
And then following that, is there some sort of preference given to, like, Lee County residents as a whole?
It is meant to benefit locals first.
And do you know, can an individual subscribe to more than one community solar project in the area?
I don't believe so.
And so when an individual subscribes to the project, how do they reap those savings? Is it a check that comes from the company?
You'll continue with the utility company you have, and what happens is, by partaking in the community solar, you'll get between 5% and 10% taken off of that electricity bill.
And are you familiar with this proposed project?
I am.
And how so?
I've been working with the landowner for about a year now on putting this project together.
On behalf of the applicant, do you agree to be bound by any and all proposals and representations made under oath during your testimony tonight?
I do.
And does the same hold true for any proposals and representations contained in all written submissions previously submitted prior to tonight's hearing?
Yes.
And you submitted a petition for special use permit for this proposed project, is that correct?
That's correct.
And concurrently with the filing of that petition, did you submit an application or a project narrative?
Yes, both.
I believe that's been marked as zoning exhibit number seven. I'm going to hold this up to you. The heading reads Maple's Road Solar One LLC Special Use Permit Application. Is it that document I just referred to?
That's correct.
And did you assist in the preparation of this document?
Yes.
And did you do so in preparation for tonight's hearing?
Yes.
And in this project narrative, where the applicant has used the word shell, does that indicate the applicant's intention to be bound by those provisions?
It does.
This project is located in Dixon Township, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's proposed to be situated on a 299-acre tract, is that correct?
Yes.
And the solar farm project site would comprise of approximately 35.3 acres, is that correct?
That's correct.
So just to keep things straight, throughout the course of this hearing, I'll refer to that 299-acre tract as the project parcel and that 35.3-acre proposed site as the leasehold area. Is that fair enough?
Sure.
What is the project parcel currently being utilized as?
It is being farmed.
Do you know the zoning?
It is under agricultural.
And when you say it's currently being farmed, is it being utilized for row crop production?
Yes.
Are there any buildings situated on the project parcel?
There are not.
What about in the leasehold area?
No.
Are you familiar with what's known as the Productivity Index, or PI, of soils?
I am.
And does that Productivity Index help determine the assessed value of farmland based on a specific soil's suitability to produce a crop?
It does.
And are you familiar with what the PI is of the leasehold area?
Based off the reports, the PI of the project area is 124, which puts it into Class B.
And how did you obtain that figure?
We obtained it through Sherdy Pro Mapping, which is based off of Illinois Bulletin 11, which is a mapping system developed by University of Illinois to provide crop yields and productivity indices.
And Class B soils are still considered to be prime farmland according to the University of Illinois, is that correct?
That is correct.
U of I determines or defines prime farmland to include cultivated land, pasture land, forest land, and other land with 0 to 6% slope, is that right?
Yes.
Isn't it true that 22.9 acres out of the leasehold area have a slope of between 5% to 12%?
Yes, that is why we picked that location.
And when you say "we," who do you mean?
The landowner.
And who is the participating landowner in this case?
Michael Pratt.
And based on your communications with Mr. Pratt, does he consider the slope to be a factor for erosion?
Yes. Purposely picked this area because it was not prime farmland, considering the slope.
Do you know what the LEASAs score for this project is?
The LEASAs for 20 years, and then with the right to renew for five years, four times.
And that's the term of the lease agreement with Mr. Pratt, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, I'm going to direct your attention to what's known as the LEASAS score for the county, that is, the land evaluation site assessment. Do you know what that score is for this project?
I do. It is 84 for the land evaluation and 115 for the site evaluation.
So I'm going to direct your attention to the site plan submitted with this project. I believe we've got one of them up on the board here, if you need to use that. The project parcel itself is rectangular shaped, is that right?
That's correct.
And can you tell me where the project is proposed to be situated?
The project, which is 35.3 acres and rectangular shape, as you said, is located on the eastern boundary of the 299-acre property site bordering the property to the east there. It's about 1,500 feet setback from Maple's Road and about 1,000 feet south of the subdivision bordering on the north and over 2,000 feet from the property, which you can't see on the map there, bordering on the south. It's right along the, you'll see, utility lines bisecting the property, and we purposely use this property, I'm sorry, this area, this parcel of the property for this reason, because it's right along those utility lines that bisected.
You mentioned the subdivision on the northern boundary of the project parcel. How close will the solar array be to that subdivision?
It will be, the closest solar panel will be about 965 feet.
If this project is sited as proposed, will the participating landowner still be able to farm the remaining acreage of the participating parcel?
They will.
What type of panels are proposed for this project?
They are called Trina 585 watt TSM NEG 19 RC .20.
Are those bifacial panels?
They are.
And what does that mean?
It means that they receive UV rays from not just the top, but also from the bottom-facing side.
And are you familiar with the dimensions of those?
They are 3.72 feet by 7.82 feet.
Approximately, how many are estimated to be used for this site?
There will be a total of 12,672 panels in the 35.3 acres.
I believe you just touched on this, but is that a fixed mounting system or tilt?
It's a mounted single-access tracker, which means it will move to track the sun.
Will those panels be coated in anti-reflective coating?
Yes, they will.
And do you know what direction those panel rows will run?
The rows will be running north-south.
What is the maximum height of those panels at full tilt?
We have it as the max of 10 feet, but they're usually even less.
What is the tilt degree from the ground level?
Maximum 52 degrees.
Will the racking for those panels be installed on posts or augered screws?
That will depend on, we have to do one more test, which is called a geotechnical scope, which we'll do after hopefully receiving a permit, because it's very costly, and that will determine what is underneath the soil. If it is rock, we will have to use an auger system. If it's not rock, then we will just use a pole system.
And I'm assuming that sort of test would tell you the industry-best standard for installation, is that correct?
Correct.
And do you commit to following that industry-best standard, especially with respect to that issue?
We do.
If they're to be installed on posts, how would those be set into the ground?
A hole will be drilled, and they would be put into a 15-foot hole. There will be no concrete added to that.
Do you have any inverters proposed with this project?
There will be two inverters on the site in the center of the parcel.
I'm sorry, I just didn't, how many did you say?
Two inverters.
Thank you.
And does each inverter have a transformer attached to it?
Yes.
What type of surface will that inverter be situated on?
So although none of the poles will have cement, both inverters will be placed on a cement pad.
And aside from those inverters that you just mentioned, do you anticipate utilizing concrete foundations for the project?
No.
Will the project be monitored?
Yes, 24/7.
Will that be remotely or onsite?
Remotely.
I'm assuming there'll be some onsite inspections, is that correct?
Usually two to three times a year.
And if a problem were to appear or show on that remote monitoring, would that warrant an extra inspection?
Yes, it would.
Will there be collection lines and transmission lines with this project?
There will, yes, they'll be underground and to the point of interconnection.
On behalf of the applicant, do you commit to having an Illinois-licensed professional engineer certify that the foundation is within accepted professional standards, given the design of the panels, local soil, and climate conditions?
I do.
Can you repeat that sentence I just asked you? It was a mouthful. I'm just kidding.
No.
Do you commit to constructing and maintaining the project in compliance with any applicable local, state, and federal regulatory standards?
Yes.
Does that include the National Electric Code?
It does.
Will all electrical components of the project have an underwriters' laboratories' listing?
Yes.
And that's known as a UL listing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with what's known as the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement, or the AMA is the acronym?
I am.
And is that a document that's entered into with the developer of a solar farm and the Illinois Department of Agriculture?
Yes, it's mandatory.
And do you commit to entering into the AMA with the Illinois Department of Agriculture regarding this project?
I do.
Do you commit to providing a copy of the executed AMA to the zoning administrator at the time you apply for a building permit?
Yes, we will.
And do you agree to abide by all terms and conditions of that AMA?
Yes.
Will the power and communication lines running between the banks of solar panels be buried underground?
Yes, they'll be underground.
Tell me about the proposed fencing for this project.
The fencing will be a seven-foot-high agricultural fence.
Will there be barbed wire on the fence?
No.
Will it contain appropriate warning signage?
Yes, it will.
And will all signage be in compliance with the National Electric Safety Code?
Yes.
And the American National Standards for Safety Signs and Colors standards?
It will.
And will that signage be in compliance with all OSHA requirements?
Yep.
Regulations, excuse me?
Yes, it will.
On behalf of the applicant, do you commit to maintaining the fence so as to prevent the growth of woody vegetation or noxious weeds along that fence line?
We will.
Will the applicant hire employees or contractors to mow and maintain the project area and along the fence line?
Yes, two to three times a year.
Are you familiar with the setback requirements contained in the ordinance regulating solar energy systems?
Yes, I am.
And so there's a requirement in that ordinance that the project has to be 15 feet setback from any property line.
That's correct.
And will the project comply with this requirement?
Yes, we'll be beyond that requirement.
And there's also a requirement that the project has to be setback a minimum of 400 feet from the foundation of an adjacent non-participating primary dwelling, is that correct?
That's correct.
And will the project as proposed abide by that requirement?
Yes, we'll be over 700 feet from the closest dwelling.
Okay. There's also a setback requirement of 60 feet from the center line of any township roadway. Does the project as proposed comply with this requirement?
Yes, we'll be over 1,500 feet from the center of the roadway of Maple's Road.
Okay. There's a requirement that you have to be 75 feet from the center line of any county roadway.
We will also be that.
There's a requirement in this ordinance, the project has to be setback 50 feet from the right-of-way of any state road. Does the project comply with this requirement?
We do.
There's a setback requirement that the project must be setback 400 feet from the property line of a platted subdivision. Does the project comply with this requirement?
Yes, we're over 900 feet.
And there's only one subdivision in proximity to this project, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's the one to the north?
To the north.
There is a 500-foot setback from any dwelling of any inverters, transformers, and/or storage equipment. Does the project comply with this requirement?
Yes, over 500 feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I just didn't hear that.
What was your answer to that?
Yes, over 500 feet.
In fact, the inverters will be setback about 1,300 feet from the nearest dwelling, is that correct?
Yes, due to being in the center of the project, they'll be further than the closest panel.
Will the fence for this project be setback a minimum of three feet from property lines?
Yes, well over three feet.
You've submitted site plans for this project in the project narrative, is that correct?
We have.
And do those plans show the setbacks, as we have discussed them?
Yes, it does.
Do the site plans show the existing property lines?
Yes.
What about the names of adjacent property owners and the current use of those properties?
They do.
Existing public and private roads?
Yep.
Do the site plans submitted show the widths of the roads and any associated easements?
They do.
Do they show waterways, streams, and rivers?
Yes.
What about the existing vegetation?
It does not show the existing vegetation, which is farmed.
Is it 100% farmland?
The area that we are using, yes.
Okay. Is there a copy of the current FEMA firm map in the application materials?
There is.
What about the mapped soils according to the Lee County Soil Survey?
Yes.
Do the site plans show the surface water drainage patterns?
Yes.
What about the subsurface drainage lines?
We do not yet have a drain tile survey that, like, the geotechnical scope is one test that we do after receiving permitting.
And do you commit to providing the drain tile survey to the Lee County zoning administrator once it's completed?
We do.
And you're actually required by the Agricultural Mitigation Agreement to commission a drain tile survey, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Do the site plans submitted with your application materials, do those show the existing pipelines?
It does.
Will NOx boxes and keys be provided at locked entrances for emergency personnel access?
Yes, they will.
Tell me about the lighting that's proposed for this project.
We will have one motion-detected light at the inverters for safety reasons.
You said "at the inverters," is that correct?
Yes.
Will that be shielded and downcast?
I do not, I'm not sure of that, but we will do that if that's required. We follow the regulations.
Let me ask you this, do you anticipate that that light that'll be close to the inverters, do you anticipate that that might spill over onto a non-participating adjacent property?
No, definitely not.
And that's because it'll be at the center of the property itself?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any security cameras proposed for this project?
There are none in the plans.
Will there be any noise generated by this project?
There will be less than 50 decibels of noise created by the inverters, which will be in the center of the site.
And that 50 decibels, is that set forth by the Illinois Pollution Control Board? Excuse me.
Yes.
And so you anticipate that there will be minimal noise associated with this project, is that correct?
Correct. Fifty, I should say 50 at most.
Have you commissioned a noise study for this project?
We have not done one individually for this project, no.
And so upon what do you base that conclusion on, that it will not exceed 50 decibels?
Past studies we've done on other projects and studies we've received from other developers.
Have those been peer-reviewed studies, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Do you anticipate that there will be some noise associated with construction of this project?
Yes.
And would that come through in the form of pile driving and various trucks and equipment coming in and out?
Yes, there'll be pile driving during the time of construction, and yes, there'll be trucks.
And do you expect any noise generated by those activities to be temporary?
They're all temporary, yes.
What about the inverters and transformers themselves? Do those generate any noise?
They make the sound of a refrigerator in the center of the 35.3-acre property.
And so is it fair to say that when the inverter is running, when you're standing at the edge of the project parcel, would an adjacent landowner be able to hear that inverter or transformer?
No.
Is there any glare associated or anticipated for this project?
There's not anticipated.
And do you commit to placing all solar collectors in such a manner so as to avoid concentrated solar glare projecting onto nearby structures, roadways, and other areas accessible to the public?
Yes.
Will the panels that you've proposed for this project, will they generate heat?
Very minimal.
Will these panels or the project itself generally change weather patterns in the area?
Definitely not.
Are there any odors expected or anticipated with this project?
Nope.
What about vibrations?
No.
And what about during construction? Will there be vibrations associated with the project, then?
There'll be depending on, there probably will be, yes, vibrations during construction, but depending on the kind of construction, whether it is based off the geotechnical scope, whether we have to pile and drive, or if we have to auger. So, but there probably will be vibrations either way.
And that would be temporary?
That would be temporary during construction.
And then after the project is constructed, do you anticipate any vibrations thereafter?
No, none.
Will this project generate any shadow flicker?
No.
Will the project, as proposed, emit any material or substance?
Nope.
Is there any vegetative screening proposed with this project?
There is not.
And why not?
We didn't find it necessary due to it being surrounded by farmland, so at this time, no.
And under the ordinance, if an adjacent landowner requested vegetative screening, would you provide the screening set forth in the ordinance?
Yes, definitely.
Looking at the site plan that's pulled up on the screen there, is there an access road proposed with this project?
Yes, there's an access road coming from Maples Road along the transmission, oh, sorry, the utility line easement.
And the access road, is that going to be blacktopped or gravel?
It'll be gravel.
I believe on that site plan, it notes a 20-foot driveway or gravel access lane, is that correct?
Yes, it would be a 20-foot wide gravel access road.
Are there any buildings to be situated onsite during construction of this project?
No, there are not.
And what about during the operational phase of the project?
No.
I'm going to jump back to the warning signage that we had discussed earlier. Will that contain the facility's 911 address?
It will.
Will it contain a 24-hour emergency contact number?
Yes.
Is there any outdoor storage proposed for this project?
Just during construction, there will be a construction lay-down area where any material is needed for the construction will be stored.
And where is that lay-down yard proposed?
It is along the access road. You can see the little square there about halfway down the access road. It's 150 feet by 150 feet, and that's temporary.
And that's on the project parcel itself, is that correct?
That is on the 299 acres, not on the 35.3.
So it's on the project parcel and not the leasehold area, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
When is construction anticipated to start for this project?
We're hoping a year from now, early 2024.
And how long do you anticipate that construction process to take?
Usually takes between four and six months.
Do you anticipate increased local traffic during that construction phase?
There is usually about two to three trucks a day.
And what type of vehicles can we expect during that construction process?
Trucks carrying the materials necessary for the construction.
Where will those vehicles park?
We hope to use the temporary lay-down area, construction lay-down area.
Once that construction phase for this project is completed, will the project increase traffic in the area or decrease?
It will have no effect on the traffic due to the minimal visits each year.
Will construction activities commence no earlier than 6:00 AM and no later than 9:00 PM?
Yes, we usually do it, I believe it's 7:30 to 5:00.
And is that generally Monday through Friday?
It would depend on the construction company that we use, but yes.
Are there any particularly identifiable fire or explosion hazards associated with construction of this project?
No, there are not.
What about the operations of this project?
No.
And during the construction phase of this project, how will the applicant intend to gather and dispose of human waste?
Porta potties.
And will there be any hazardous materials and quantities that trigger any regulatory requirements with respect to admissions and waste?
No.
Are there batteries proposed with this project?
Yes.
And how will they be contained?
They will be contained in the center of the project where the inverters are.
And will they be stored in any type of container?
Yes, in a storage container.
And so for those of us not familiar with that, what is a storage container? What does it look like?
It looks like a smaller back of a truck.
And what material is it made out of?
Leaf metal.
How will you dispose of those batteries?
That will come at the time of decommissioning, and that's part of the decommissioning plan.
Did you host a community meeting for this proposed project?
I did.
Do you recall when that was held?
March 14th of this year.
And where was it held at?
In here.
In here?
In this courtroom.
At the old Lee County Courts Building?
Yes.
On the third floor?
Yep.
And do you recall roughly how many attendees were there?
I'd estimate around 20.
Let me back up, you were personally present at that meeting, is that correct?
I was, yes.
Did you notify all persons who owned real estate adjacent to the project parcel and those within 1,000 feet of the project parcel?
Yes, we did.
And did you notify them by regular, excuse me, by certified mail?
Yes.
And the ordinance requires that you send notice by regular first-class mail for that community meeting, is that correct?
It does.
Now, you heard Mr. Gardner get up and say that he had not received a notice. I'm assuming he meant the community notice?
Yes.
And do you know anything about that?
I do, after finding out unfortunately that you did not receive it. We did intend it to be sent out, but the address that was listed on the county website was not the accurate one, and we sent it by certified mail, and it was received, so we thought that you had received it, but fortunately it was not the correct address.
And so the mail-to address for his adjacent parcel, it sends it to Central Bank of Illinois, is that correct?
That is the address it went to, yes.
And that's the address listed on the Lee County GIS website, is that correct?
Correct.
And so Central Bank of Illinois received the notice of community meeting, is that correct?
It did.
And immediately upon finding out that Mr. Gardner had not personally received the notice of community meeting, did you reach out to Mr. Gardner?
As soon as I learned that he did not receive it, I did reach out when he told Dee.
When you say Dee, you mean Dee Duffy, the Lee County zoning administrator?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, Dee Duffy.
And so with the preparation of the notice of public hearing for tonight's hearing, those went by certified mail as well, is that correct?
They did as well, yeah.
And for each one of those certified mailings, did you, on behalf of the applicant, did those go to the site address adjacent to this proposed project?
Yes.
And did those also go out to the mail-to address listed for each site on the Lee County GIS website?
I believe so, yes.
And so using Mr. Gardner as an example, that notice of public hearing would go to his site address on Maples Road, and it would go to his mail-to address, so in this case, Central Bank of Illinois, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so in a sense, you over-notified or double-notified for the notice of public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Jumping back to that community meeting, did you present a copy of the site plan?
I did.
And did you explain the project generally at that meeting?
Yes, I did.
Did you discuss the anticipated construction schedule?
Yes.
Was there a landscape and screening plan discussed at that community meeting?
I believe it was discussed, yes.
And the decommissioning plan?
Yes.
And you had actually disseminated a handout at that community meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
What, if anything, can you tell me about the project's effect on the character of the neighborhood?
It should only have a positive effect due to bringing the ability for locals to participate in community solar.
And that's by way of that subscription process that you testified to earlier?
Correct.
And you said that this project parcel is zoned agricultural. What about the adjacent parcels? What are they primarily being used as?
Besides the north, the majority are agricultural.
Do you believe solar energy to be a good neighbor?
Yes, definitely.
How so?
Very quiet, low traffic. What it does is it increases the tax revenue by a pretty large percentage, and like I said a couple of times, it helps reduce the price of electricity for any of those who participate.
And there are certain ancillary benefits that could come from the siding of this particular project, is that correct?
Correct.
And that would be through, you know, during the construction process, bringing workers to the area, those would in turn possibly go to businesses, restaurants within the community, is that correct?
Yes, during construction, there should be about 30 to 40 local construction workers that get hired to work on this, and then at least two to three long-term.
Those be prevailing wage jobs?
They're all prevailing wage, yeah.
Do you have an estimation of the taxes that this project would generate over the 20-year life?
Based off of the amount of taxation per megawatt, I would say that within the first year, the taxes just on the 35.3 acres would be $31,000, over $31,000. And over 20 years, that would add up to over $1 million.
And you testified earlier that you don't believe the project will have any negative effect on the surrounding properties, is that correct?
No, we've done tests on other projects, and it shows that solar farms do not cause any ill effects on neighboring properties, values.
That would be because there's no glare, there's no odor, shadow flicker, any of those items, is that correct?
Correct.
In the site plan set, have you shown the planned location and spacing of the panels?
Yes, we have.
And you've shown the access road and access points, is that correct?
Correct.
Have you shown the planned location, height, and fencing materials of all fencing?
Yes, we have.
And the planned location of any lines connecting the project to a building, substation, or other electric load?
Yes.
Have you shown the planned new electric equipment that is to be the connection point for the solar energy system?
The electric equipment is more on the utility.
Say that again?
The electric equipment is more on the utility side. COMED would have that.
Did you submit a landscape plan with the application?
We did.
What about manufacturer specifications?
We don't really know that yet. That comes more toward the time of building permit.
And why don't you know that yet?
Because things will change by that time.
Because what will change?
The...
The word you used.
Things will change, simply put.
And do you commit to providing the manufacturer's specifications for all project modules at the time you apply for a building permit?
Yes, we do.
Are you familiar with Tier 1 modules?
Yes.
And what are those?
Top quality, and that is what we use.
And you commit to using Tier 1 modules for this project, then?
I do.
Have you detailed the connection and interconnection details of this project?
Yes.
And is that contained within the project narrative previously submitted?
It is.
Is the project located within 500 feet of an airport?
No.
What about any approach zone of an airport?
No.
And based on this, was there a solar glare hazard analysis tool required?
No.
Did you submit a fire protection plan with the application materials?
We did.
Will the project have any effect on the local environment?
No.
And was there an ECOCAT consultation performed?
Yes, we did.
And what result, if any?
No endangered species in the area will be affected.
And so as such, that consultation was terminated?
It was.
And did you include that termination letter in your application materials?
Yes, we did.
And on those materials for the ECOCAT, it notes that the applicant is Greenberg Farrell. Who or what is that entity?
That is a consultant we used in the past.
But that company was commissioned by the applicant in this case?
Yes, it was.
And it was for this specific project?
Correct.
Did you have a wetland study commissioned for this project?
We did.
And when?
We had that performed by NCAP in February of this year.
And what was the result of that study?
There were no wetlands found.
And did you include those negative findings with all the exhibits in your application materials?
Yes, we did.
And did you have a stormwater analysis performed for this project?
We did.
And can you tell me what a stormwater analysis is?
Yes, analyzation of the resources in the area and any effects we may have upon them.
And who prepared that?
We had that done by the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District.
And what findings, if any?
They found that it would actually have a decrease in the curve number and stormwater runoff.
Will the project be located, designed, constructed, and operated so as to avoid and mitigate any impacts to wildlife?
Yes.
And on behalf of the applicant, do you commit to entering into a road use agreement with the county and any impacted townships if necessary?
Yes, we do.
And this Lee County ordinance on solar energy system requires a consulting fund as determined by the Lee County engineer. Are you familiar with that requirement?
Yes.
Do you agree to post money into that consulting fund once that amount is determined by the Lee County engineer?
Yes, we will.
With respect to the ordinance provisions that relate to the stormwater management, retention of topsoil, and minimize disturbance to prime farmland, do you agree to abide by all of the requirements as set forth in those ordinance provisions?
Yes, we do.
And as part of its application materials, did the applicant submit an erosion control and re-vegetation plan?
Yes.
Do you commit to repairing and restoring all drainage tiles damaged during the construction, operation, and deconstruction of this project?
Yes, we do.
And does that commitment include repairing and restoring them to the same or better condition as to when construction began?
Yes.
And you not only make that commitment here during this zoning hearing, but that's also a requirement under the AMA, is that correct?
Yes, both.
Do you agree to reach out to, excuse me, to local drainage districts prior to construction to ensure applicable drainage districts are located?
Yes, we do.
And do you commit to maintaining proper drainage both above and below the drain tiles for this project?
Yes.
And do you believe this to be one of the goals of the county ordinance on solar energy systems?
100%.
And is the same true under the AMA?
Yes.
Will any grading need to be performed to the leasehold area?
I do not believe there's any grading planned at this point.
And you mentioned previously that you intend to commission a drain tile survey for the leasehold area, is that correct?
Yes, we will.
Will there be any communication interference associated with this project?
No.
And what evidence, if any, do you have to support this?
Past tests have shown that there's no communication issues caused by solar panels or solar systems.
And to those tests, were those included in any peer-reviewed academic studies?
Yes.
Do you commit to providing as-built drawings to the Lee County zoning administrator and county assessor upon completion of construction?
Yes.
Do you agree to abide by the operational standard conditions as set forth in the ordinance governing solar energy systems?
Yes.
What about the repowering provisions of the ordinance?
Yes.
And the decommissioning requirements as well?
We do.
Do you agree to carry general liability insurance in the amount set forth in the ordinance?
Yes.
Will you provide proof of that to the Lee County zoning administrator?
Yes, we will.
Will there be any electromagnetic fields generated by the operation of this project?
Very minimal.
When you say very minimal, try to quantify that for me.
The amount you get from a appliance in your house.
I believe you covered this, but if this project were approved and cited, would there be any effect on local area employment during the construction phase?
During construction, we usually employ 30 to 40 construction workers.
Is there any evidence of how this proposed project would affect property values in its vicinity?
From tests we have on other sites and other research, it does not affect any neighboring property values.
Do you commit to maintaining a point of contact person with the Lee County zoning office so as to address any complaints received by the county regarding this project?
There will be a number on, there will be a telephone number listed on the site.
Will you maintain a log of non-participating owners and their complaints regarding this project?
That would also be with the phone number on the site.
I mean, if you received a complaint internally, you would maintain a log of that and follow up on it, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
What do you anticipate the useful life of this project to be?
The average of a panel is now about 25 years, hence we have the lease go 20 years with an option to renew in five-year increments after that to make sure that the panels are at their top quality.
So you said the initial lease term is 20 years, but there's extension options?
Yes, five-year periods.
And how many extension options?
Four.
Will the applicant develop and construct this project?
We are the development company, and once developed, we will pass it on to someone to construct and to maintain.
And will the applicant operate this project?
No, the person who will pass it on to will.
And when you say pass it on, I mean, that will likely be a sale to another entity, is that correct?
Yes.
And so if the applicant were to sell this project, would the sale be subject to the same terms and conditions of any special use permit granted to this project?
Yes, 100%.
And so in other words, would the purchaser have to abide by any and all terms and conditions set by the county board for this project?
Yes, everything.
Are you familiar with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
Yes.
And that plan serves as the blueprint for the growth and development within the county, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's designed to aid government officials, developers, landowners, and the general public when making decisions regarding growth in the county, is that a fair statement?
Yes, I'd say so.
And so I'm going to read some of the goals to you of that plan. The first one is to maintain agricultural economy in the county by limiting non-agricultural development on prime farmland. How do you feel that this project as proposed meets or helps the county achieve that goal?
I feel we have chosen the right farmland in the county to use for this reason, due to it being on such a slope and not being prime farmland for that reason. So although we are using farmland, it is for a socio-economic reason by bringing tax revenue and ability to partake in community solar.
And so by citing this project on the leasehold area, you're going to take the leasehold area out of row crop production, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the remainder of the project parcel will still be able to farm, be farmed?
Yes.
And do you consider the siting of a solar farm to be in agricultural use?
Yes.
Another goal of the Comprehensive Plan is to preserve the rural character and farming lifestyle of the county. How do you think the project as proposed helps the county achieve that goal?
I'm sorry, can you say that one again?
Sure. It's, the goal is to preserve the rural character and farming lifestyle of the county.
I think where we position the site is prime because it is off the road, is not visible. It will still be surrounded by farmland.
Do you believe the project as a whole fits in with the Comprehensive Plan?
Yes.
Do you believe the project will help preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the county?
Yes.
And this project as proposed, will it require any new public infrastructure?
No.
I don't have anything further, Judge.
And, thank you, and now is a good time for a break. Let's do that. Pick up again at 8:30.
That's legal lingo for let's start up again. Mr. Ryan? You're only half done. All right, everybody's back in place. Questions of this witness, Ms. Sasser? Ms. Hinkle?
Earlier, you noted that a drain tile survey had not been done. Do you commit to providing the drain tile survey prior to the issuance of a building permit?
Yes, definitely.
With regards to screening, are you aware that the ordinance states that a minimum of 30 days prior to the issuance of any building permit, the applicant shall provide a signed copy of a memorandum of understanding to the zoning administrator outlining the terms of the visual screening option as agreed upon by the applicant and owner of any adjacent non-participating dwelling?
Yes.
With regards to the manufacturer specs, do you commit to providing those prior to the issuance of the building permit?
Yes.
Nothing further?
Ms. Duffy?
So during construction, the construction trucks traveling both north and south on Maples Road and Stony Point, or how do you anticipate them coming in?
I imagine they'll just use Maples Road. We can work with the transportation to see if there is something, if there is a better route than another, but we can, we can direct them one way or another, but I'm guessing that Maples Road would be the best.
Both ways, coming in from the north and the south?
I would have to look at a map to see what the best route would be, but we could work on a route if there's some specific one you want, but right now I'd say I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
How about zoning board members, Mr. Forster? No questions at this time. Mr. Burrow?
Yes, a couple. Referring to the, the utility line or the current electric lines that are there, they're coming down or along the Maples Road then, to the, along the property then, and are you going to be putting up new lines going, overhead lines going from your parcel to the ComEd lines?
No, so we're actually not hooking into the lines that are on Maples Road. We're hooking into the lines that are cutting across Mike's property. So they're right there. Can't really make them out too well on that map, but if you saw they're right.
Nobody here knows who Mike is.
Mr. Pratt, Michael Pratt. The landowner, I'm sorry, the landowner, Michael Pratt, his property as we're speaking of, if you look at that access road right there coming off of Maple, there are some ComEd lines running right along that through the property, and then we will interconnect right on the southwest corner there. So the interconnection will come off of the existing utility lines and then go right into the site.
Is that a three-phase line running there?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Which is one reason why we also picked this area.
The tile map you'd mentioned about having that done, was, did the owner have a tile map for you or not?
I don't believe the owner has a tile map, and we definitely will, we understand that's one of the biggest concerns is the drain tile. We just hold off on doing those until after getting permitting just because they're pricey and there is a weight on that just because it is such a big issue. So we already have somebody lined up to do the drain tile map.
An issue that's came up in the last couple of weeks with some, in the county, has been wind damage. How many, what's the speed that these, these solar panels or your design is going to stand to keep from getting damaged?
I don't have an exact number, but I have not heard of any wind damage to any of our solar panels, so I don't think that's a common problem with ones that we use, but I don't have an actual number on the, the speed of the wind that would cause damage. But there, we use, as we said, we use the top-notch, so I believe it would be, have to be pretty windy to cause any damage to them.
And where, do you have other sites, projects you've completed already?
We do, but that would be hard to compare to because things, since solar is evolving so fast, the panels that were used at those sites are, I won't say primitive, but things are progressing so fast that these, the panels we'll use when we do this a year from now are going to be even more advanced.
How long ago did you start building solar fields?
In Illinois. I think the first was done in, well, permitted in 2017, so probably constructed in 2018.
You mentioned something about batteries in a container. Are you going to store energy in batteries in?
Yes.
Okay. Does, I thought our county ordinance required this to be in, in concrete containment units. Is that how this will work or not?
I don't believe that is in the ordinance. If it is, we can, we can do that as well. I'm not aware of that regulation, but we can do that.
So how large an area or how much, is there a measurement of how much battery storage you're going to have?
We don't have that yet because again, that is progressing so fast and they're getting smaller and smaller, so a year from now, they could be half the size they are now.
We have not had anyone previously do this yet. That's why we were asking the question.
You're just telling them things, just ask them questions.
So that's why, okay.
Okay, that's, that's interesting.
That's our question. Let's not deteriorate to that.
I see. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Meyer?
With the class, or the C and D slope soils on this parcel, they have the huge slopes, what extra precautions are you going to take that you wouldn't normally take on a flat parcel?
It just makes it a little harder to figure out where to put the single access trackers, as we call it, having a slope. The dream is to have a perfectly flat piece of land, but due to this having a little bit of a slope, we have to maneuver around it a little bit.
Will you cause any extra erosion during the building or the, or the operation of it because of the slopes?
No, it won't. And then, in fact, one thing that will be beneficial is we will be adding pollinators, which I don't think we mentioned at all during the prior questions, and that will actually prevent erosion.
What kind of pipeline is on the parcel?
We did not have any pipelines located.
There's no pipelines?
No.
Where are the tier-one panels going to be manufactured?
At this time, most likely, most of the panels come from China. We're working on it, though.
How close are you to the Dixon Airport?
I don't have a measurement in my head, but not, not, not close enough to cause a glare concern.
Can you describe the egg fencing?
Yes, it's a, I have a visual of it. It's, it's a seven-foot-high chain-link fence, but not your average chain-link fence, a little, little bit closer knit.
Where are all the easements on the property now for utilities? Not everybody has the map, and it's kind of hard to see.
Sure. So the utility lines almost bisect the property directly in the middle, close to the middle, and they'll be running right along the south border there. So you'll see the access road, and so it starts there at Maples Road and continues straight across to the adjacent property. And underneath those utility lines is a 20-foot easement. So we won't have to worry about the easement to the south of the lines because we're not located there, but we'll be 20 feet to the north of that easement, the access road included.
You will commit to be calling Julie when you're doing your digging and pounding? Julie, the underground?
Yes, yeah, we will definitely contact them.
And how much more expensive is it to use the screws than to put the posts in?
I don't really have a price estimate for you, but we prefer to do the piles, I know that.
I don't have any other questions.
Ms. Haas?
You referenced property value studies done, correct?
Yes.
Were those done by your company?
No, they're done by a real estate firm called Cone Resnick.
Did those pertain to community solar projects of a comparable size?
Yes.
And when were those studies done?
We have them throughout a few years, and a couple were done just last month.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's all.
Okay. All right. I have a few, and before I forget, I reserve asking more questions till Monday night. You indicated that Maple Road Solar is part of New Leaf Energy. Is Maple Road Solar One LLC wholly owned by New Leaf Energy?
Yes.
You indicated that a community solar allowed a subscriber to continue with their, to subscribe to the service. That has to be a subscription through the same, their utility company, the subscriber, potential subscriber's utility company has to be the same utility company as the, as the energy fed by the community solar project, is that right?
That is correct.
And who will that be then?
That would be ComEd.
And I may have missed some of this just by trying to take notes quickly. There'll, there'll be two transformers, is that correct?
Yes.
Will both the transformers and inverters be on concrete pads?
The transformers are basically part of the inverter, they're attached, and they're both, yes, they'll both.
The same pad?
Same unit on, and they'll be located, they'll be on two separate pads.
You said that you provided drainage patterns in your supplemental material. Where is that? And if you, if you need to get, get something from your briefcase, that's fine.
I was referring to the grading and erosion control plan.
Have you got a page?
There's not a page number, it's near the end on the maps.
What's, what's the title of it?
The title is on the bottom left, grading and erosion control plan.
Would you count how far back?
It's near the end.
Well, I know you're near the end, but how many pages back from the end?
About seven maps from the end.
What's the title?
Rating an erosion, erosion control plan.
Would you find it on mine? Thanks. It'd be difficult, but I can find it.
Oh, I don't think, look, is that a different?
It's not in the bound volume, is it? It's not in the bound volume, is it?
I'm not seeing it.
Right. Do you, is it perhaps in the schematics?
It should be one of those you have right there.
So instead of being, so what'd you do, prepare two bound volumes, two different bound volumes?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well. Well, just a minute, let me, he's on the stand. So what you're, the bound volume you're holding there is not the same bound volume that I just?
I guess not, is this a different one?
No, don't, you don't ask your, if you don't know, just?
I do not know.
Is the, is the drainage map you're referring to, I'm going to show you about page six of the, what you titled site use permit set, is that an enlarged version of what you're talking about? Where on there does it show drainage pattern? Just off the topography, so that's the only pattern, correct? It's the topography.
And then when we do the drainage tile survey, we'll know the exact drainage patterns.
All right, you said in your direct testimony that pipelines were shown, but then, I think when Mr. Meyer asked you, you said there are no pipelines?
There are none.
Are there pipelines or are they, are there pipelines shown or not at all?
They would be shown if they existed, but they didn't.
But they're not, it's okay. You indicated there was, there would be no glare from these TV panels, but I don't think I understood how you know there's going to be no glare.
There would be nothing affected by any glare from these.
So if there's glare, there's nothing affected, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Will the panels, and you may have said again, will the panels have AR coding?
They will.
You said in your direct testimony you had not offered any ordinance screening to adjacent landowners, why not?
We had not offered any.
And the ordinance-driven screening options?
Well, we did not believe it was necessary due to it being in the center of the farmed land, but the option is there.
Okay, I'm not trying to be difficult, but either you offered the option to, under the ordinance, you're required to offer the option, you either offered the option or you didn't.
I, I would say during the community meeting, we spoke of it, but I don't know if there's any physical offer.
There's no physical offer, okay. Because why?
It didn't seem like there would be any reason to put additional landscaping around the fence in the middle of the cornfield.
So you just ignored the ordinance, thinking that's what you, because you didn't think it needed? So you just ignored the ordinance, thinking that's what you, because you didn't think it needed to be done?
No, I wouldn't say that. Ignored it. I'm not sure of the appropriate manner you're supposed to offer the neighboring properties. But we can do that.
You indicated the batteries would be stored in the center part of the leasehold area, and it looks like the back of a truck was your quote. Back of what kind of truck? A semi, a pickup?
A semi, but smaller.
So do you know the dimensions?
Like I said, by the time we put them in next year, they'll be probably half the size. I can get a dimension of what they are now, just because the size is decreasing due to.
I mean, the size of the storage container is what I meant. So you think about half the size of a semi?
I would make that guestimate.
Okay. Isn't, wouldn't you call that a structure?
I wouldn't, but I guess you could.
Will it be affixed to the land?
Yes.
How?
I believe it would be also on the cement pad.
The same cement pad?
I'll have to look into that.
So you don't know?
I'm not sure, no. They are, they are shown on the map. I just don't know if they will be on the cement pad or to the side of it.
You said there'd be local jobs, and you said something, then later you said something about you hire 40 construction workers. Would they all be local construction workers?
We, yes, we would hope that they would be. We don't make that decision, but.
Who does?
Once we put the package together where we sell the plan to, we'd make that decision. But we make sure that we have it signed that there will be prevailing wages.
Okay. And forgive me, I'm really confused. The point of interconnection, the line that goes across the landowners' project parcel, is that above ground or below ground?
Sorry, the line that goes above?
The electrical transmission line that goes, that goes through the landowners' project parcel. Is that above ground or below ground?
The ComEd line is above ground.
Okay. How do you get?
Judge, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. How do you get the collected aggregate energy that is produced by the panels from your, from the project to the above ComEd line?
So it will go into what's called a pole farm, which will be a collection of three to five poles, which it goes through a process to hook actually into the existing utility lines. So it'll be underground coming from the site, and then it will come above ground to these poles, which will then interconnect with.
So there'll be three to five poles?
Yes.
And how high will they be?
Your average telephone pole height.
Which is what, 30 feet?
20, yeah, 20-something.
And how far apart would they be spaced?
I believe they are 25 feet apart. That is a, I do not know. That is a guess.
And if you know.
More of the utility company does that part.
And if you know, in what part of the project parcel or the leasehold area would those 25 poles be located?
Not 25, just three to five.
I'm sorry, yeah, three to five.
The southwest corner.
Okay. And where is the, where's the stormwater analysis you referred to? Where in your materials?
I don't see them in this package, but they were submitted.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you remember by whom the analysis was done?
Yes, it was done by the Soil and Water Conservation District.
That's right. You said that later on. Okay. But you don't see it in the packet. Perhaps it's in Ms. Duffy's exhibit.
Perhaps, yeah. I don't see it in this one. But I know it was submitted.
All right. I want to make sure I understand the progress of entity events. So you develop, hopefully get a special-use primed, make the deal with ComEd, and then, once you reach construction stage, is that when you sell your developed package to what, a construction contractor? Or to an eventual end buyer?
To an end buyer.
Who then turns around and hires a construction company of their choice?
Yes.
What's the name of, what's the nomenclature for the end buyer in your industry? What do you call that?
Well, an example would be NEXAM.
I mean, is there a operator? Is that what you call them?
I'm not sure what.
Okay.
There's different interested parties, so I wouldn't say there's that name.
Okay, thank you. Interested parties. Anybody with questions? Raise your hand. Seeing none. Do I have any on Zoom? Oh, you did have. Okay. State your name again for.
Doug Gardner.
Thank you. Question, let's witness.
You go, about the drainage on the road, excess road coming in there. Are you going, is that going to be checked or what?
Yes, it will. I believe the surveyors that you saw the other day, they're analyzing that right now. So we're doing a wetland study on that. That's what those surveyors were there for. So we will do a drainage.
And you say that road, excess road is going to be 20 feet wide?
Yes, it will.
Okay. How are you going to control traffic on that road, on that excess road?
Meaning trying to keep people off of it?
Yes, sir.
Well, there won't be any fence at the beginning. The fence will just be around the the site, but we could put signage at the beginning telling people to keep off of it.
Reason I ask, sir, is because I got.
It doesn't matter what reason, just ask them questions.
Well, I got my, okay. I just wondered how you're going to control that. Who's going to be responsible if somebody's trespassing on that?
Well, since it's an easement, I believe we would be responsible for it.
Okay.
Guess that's all. Okay. Zoomers? Jonathan, anybody? Nope. Okay. Redirect. Ms. Kennedy?
Please, please, Your Honor. Can we pull up the existing conditions map?
Give her a page, give him a page. I think it helps.
I believe it's sixth. Maybe try 90. Try 88 once, please.
I'm sorry, I just.
88.
Here.
I believe it was, go up one more, Alice. I'm sorry. Thank you. That's it.
Sorry, I already done it once today.
Okay, so page 87, labeled existing conditions. Mr. Ren, I'm going to have you use this map to answer a few questions, okay? I'm going to go back to the vegetative screening. And by ordinance, a visual screen is defined as a visual barrier, which through the use of vegetative landscaping, opaque fencing, or approved combination thereof, is of such a nature and density that provides year-round opacity and screen structures and activities on the parcel from a single-story dwelling viewpoint. So looking at this map, the area outlined in red, that would be the leasehold area where the project is to be situated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And as you testified earlier, that is located in on the project parcel?
Yes.
Okay. So looking at that subdivision to the north of this leasehold area, you said it was over 900 feet away. Is that correct?
It is, yes.
And so because of the natural topography and how far away that subdivision is, does it make sense to provide a visual screen on the border of the project?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Moving your attention directly to the parcel on the eastern boundary of the project, that is unimproved farmland. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so there's not a residence or dwelling as defined by the ordinance to screen from. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, looking at the southern boundary of this leasehold area, it's adjacent to what I would call the project parcel. Is that correct?
Yes.
So there's no screening that needs to be provided in that area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Looking at the southeastern corner of this project or this leasehold area, the adjacent property is the DPG Trust. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And there is a residence situated on that. Is that correct? And would you be willing on behalf of the applicant to provide a visual screening option to that residence?
Yes.
Even though it's along what you've referred to as the access road of the project?
Yep. And I did speak to Doug about that.
Doug, Mr. Gardner?
The landowner, yes.
Okay. And he's on behalf of the DPG Trust. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, looking at the western edge of the leasehold area, the adjacent landowner to this leasehold area would be the project parcel itself. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so there would be no screening required for that instance either. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so it's not necessarily outright refusal to follow the vegetative screening components of the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
I don't, well, I have one real quick question. When you look at the existing conditions map, there are one.
Judge, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. When you look at the existing conditions plan, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 residents adjoining the parcel, the project parcel. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you've not offered any of those, formally offered any of those, the screening options, correct?
Like Ms. Kennedy said, there is much of the participating parcel in between that. It doesn't seem that it would make sense to.
Didn't ask you that. I said you've not offered any of those 10, their screening options, have you?
No.
Okay. When would you, if the ordinance is interpreted as adjacent being to the project parcel, when would you do that offer and how would you do it? If you know.
I would do it as soon as possible, and I could do that by either meeting the landowners in person or by telephone.
Okay. You may step down, thanks. But I reserve for Monday night any other questions because I got to go through the motions. All right. Well, it's 10 after 9. No sense starting another phase at this point. I want to make sure we're on the same page. The proposal is, the next available date is Monday night at 7:00. Are you still avail, I think Ms. Duffy polled you before, but Ms. Hus, are you still available?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Forster?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, so all other things being said, Monday night at 7 o'clock, right? 7, we're still in the seven, now we're in the 7 o'clock mode here, third floor, Old Lee County Courthouse courtroom. I think. Now, I'm hesitating. Do, at this point, do any interested parties wish to testify? I'm not going to hold you to it, but. I'm sorry, I just, I made the mistake of not speaking in the microphone. I can't hear you back there, so.
Is this where we say what we feel about this or what?
No, that's closing statement.
Okay, no.
All right. Monday night, 7 o'clock here.